All right, the next item we have then is National Day of Prayer. So proclamation, National Day of Prayer, May 5, 2022. Whereas annually, the President of the United States issues a proclamation designated the first Thursday in May. It's National Day of Prayer. And whereas our spiritual lives form a profound connection with God and inform how each one of us approaches our relationships with one another and with the world we live in. And whereas we are called upon to love one another and to build one another up to realize the gifts and talent that each of us has given. And where it is my prayer that we remember and honor the many people we have lost because of COVID-19 pandemic. We pray for comfort and support for family and friends who have suffered losses. And whereas I offer my sincerest appreciation and thankfulness for the many people who have supported our community and country during the pandemic. And whereas it is my prayer that each one of us reflects upon our place in this world and our relationships with one another, that we center ourselves on genuine love for one another, that we actively seek and bring forth truth in ourselves and one another, and that we turn our hearts away from division and toward unity of spirit. Where it is my prayer that each one of us activates love, kindness, justice, and humility in all that we do and that we seek truth and reconciliation with one another. And then we work to reform those aspects of our lives that harm others and women and others through fulfilling their calling to realize the gifts that they also were given. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, here in the city of Monroe, Washington, do hereby encourage residents and employers in the road to join me on May 5, 2022. In observing the National Day of Prayer, further, I call upon every resident to pray and actively seek to develop and enhance love, unity, peace with one another within our community, across our country.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
The last thing, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to add one more thing to be to the list of presentations on the agenda so that I can distribute something early, and that would be the proclamation for Mother's Day. So before we lose all the moms who are in here, I am recognizing May 2022 as Mother's Day. And I would ask, actually, I'm going to go ahead and go into distribute my Mother's Day card, which is our proclamations wishing you have the Mother's Day. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is legislative update with Senator Wagner and Representative Hesley. So please go ahead and approach the podium.
Whoops, the podium's not turning on. It's yellowed. Did you push the button on the big button?
We can always flip it with the one that's on the table. It's the clap button. All right, Senator, welcome this evening.
Lovely to be here. First of all, I want to thank the nice company tonight. But coffee is an important part of my life. Thanks so much. And thanks to all of you for having us here tonight. I want to start out with a little bit of sadness because we've been redistricted out of you or you've been redistricted out of us. And it has been such a point of pride for Carolyn and I to represent the city of Monroe and the people of Monroe and the Corrections Center. Don't think that we will forget you because we're moved a line on the map. We're still committed to the people statewide and certainly our closest neighbors, a community that we basically, I cut my teeth on in legislative sense as a new senator, and he's always been part of that. So I'm sad to not have you in the district, but we won't forget about the problems and issues that we committed to. Benish 522, still a sticker on the back of my truck, and we're still working towards a solution to that. So I mentioned the Department of Corrections up the road. I wish I had more optimistic look back of the last session, but I think that primarily the last session was one of missed opportunities. And what I mean by that, we had as a state a budget surplus, you probably heard $15 billion, and it was actually $16 billion. So we were in an environment to do a lot of good. It should have been the easiest budget in Washington State history to write with a $16 billion surplus. But the legislature has been out of balance. In fact, I think our state government has been out of balance for a while. I gave a comment at a candidate's event a few days ago and talked about balance and the importance of that in the legislature. When you have imbalance for a long time, which we have had, I've never been in a majority, things tend to swing too far. And I think parity is really the best type of government. When we're close, when there's one or two votes, we really learn how to compromise and do what's best for constituents across the state. That didn't happen this session. So with a $16 billion surplus, school spending went down again for the second year in a row. 2017, when Republicans were in the majority, we had more than 50% of our budget spent on schools, which is our constitutional duty. This year, it'll be down to 43%, which is opening the door for yet another McCleary-like lawsuit. That didn't even happen. As Republicans, we proposed a property tax reduction, sales tax reduction, temporary gas tax reduction. All we got was a little bit of a tease. We almost got diapers removed from taxes, but then the House let that fail. So made it off the Senate floor. We got no tax relief at all for Washington State residents, and we're living in affordability crisis right now. But what's even more important than our pocketbooks is public safety. And I think that if you just turn on the news tonight, you're going to see that we're also in a public safety crisis. Another missed opportunity, we had a chance to fix some of the police reforms that I will say went too far. I think some police reform was needed and valuable in the last session, went a little too far, lost that balance. We had a chance to pull that back. Some of you may be familiar with Senate Bill 5919. That was the bill that would have allowed our officers to proceed with reasonable suspicion. It was a bipartisan bill, tight, but it made it off the Senate floor to the House. And then there was a federal amendment which required it to come back to the Senate for concurrence, and the majority did not allow it to come back, so that bill died. We could have done better and with a more balanced legislature, I believe we would have done better. There's a couple of things that are in the news that there were bills out to fix. If you've seen the cannabis robberies, some of them very violent, some of them involving murders. Senator Jim Hunniford had a bill to add to make different penalties for people who burglarize, rob, use firearms to rob cannabis. It didn't make it. He also had a bill to legalize fentanyl testing equipment so that drug users, well, they may be using drugs, and that's not good. They should at least be allowed to possess testing equipment so they know if they're going to die because this has fentanyl. We couldn't get that across the board. Then there was the transportation bill. There's some good things in the transportation bill, but that was done totally without any Republican participation. And that has not been the traditional way that we have worked in the legislature. The Republican plan would have used one half of the retail sales tax for retail auto sales to fund that, and we would have funded it at $8 million more than it was funded without hitting up anything. You just shift that sales tax. It's a sound method because it is tied to inflation and it's tied to population growth. This was the year that should have happened. It did not. So that's a lot of kind of bad news. The good news is the capital budget was worth marvels between bipartisan. We got a lot of good things. Monroe did not specifically ask for much, if anything, in the last session. I don't know if that's because we did such a good job for you in previous sessions, I like to think that. But we were able to get, and I'm very proud of this, about $2.275 million for everything to expand their behavioral health centers. So that is going to be something that's going to benefit the entire area. Very proud of it, very proud to work with my seatmate to get that money for our community. And I will end there and take questions.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any questions for the Senator? All right, thank you very much, Representative.
Good evening. Did you get my telephone? We did, and our first, Jody, I thought I can change this. Thank you. I have to tell you the reason I don't have one is because, too, I have a new PR person, and I was only trying so that, you know, oh, that, you know, the one I had a few years ago, and I was so impressed, I said, I'm going to have one. The other question I have right off the bat is, is do we have a raffle going on tonight? There's a moped out there that I have. Well, if we get top at the coffee shop, raffle it off. Thank you. The first one, and I have to congratulate Senator Wagner. He's touched base on everything that I was going to talk about, but you're going to see it in print this night, right? Sometimes that's helpful, you can hear it twice that way. So the session began January 10th this year, ended on March 10th. And out of the, I don't remember, 3,000 bills that were initiated, 390 end up all the way through. And that's in a two-month period, so that's a lot of work. We'd like to stop right now and emphasize the fact that COVID has hurt us tremendously in the legislature. We have fallen way behind in many of our negotiations and many of the bills and ideas that range that we start with because of COVID, because we could not negotiate, because we couldn't move the hallway. My situation was a little different than Senator Wagner's. He was able to go down and be on the floor because he, uh... But when it came to the time where they're going to allow more people on the floor, I got COVID. And so you not only had to be vaccinated, you know, and I'm here to tell you I was vaccinated, but I couldn't get booster because I COVIDed for the second time. So I couldn't go down. And, you know, once you get settled into the room at home, feels pretty good to be home. Kind of enjoyed that, but that did not help our situation for getting Bill's path that we really, really, really needed to get and needed more negotiations. Okay, we can move on. Jody, thanks. Oh, that's tough to see. Can you read that? You can? Good.
So Carolyn Hesley did a really good job.
No, I have those in front of me, so, because I didn't want to go over a few of the bills that actually got passed. And good or bad, you know, there's more regulations for the cities. There's just no two ways about that. 1799, there's new regulations on how you separate your garbage. And you have to be more, I think, a plan now to make sure that there are any ways to separate out regular waste. It's a whole nother... Noose around your neck, so to speak, because it's going to cost cities money. It's just going to cost the cities money. You're going to have to make sure that it's in your plan and organic material is better. You have to have a management plan at your facility for this new procedure. How it goes 1768 is, it is, it's designed energy management systems to need it to reduce the energy use in any of your new facilities. That will show reduction of greenhouse emissions. That's 1768. 5961 is all about biochar. How many of you have heard about biochar? We have any raised hands? No. So it's a charcoal. I did a big investigation myself because I found it kind of interesting that it was such, it was everywhere here to emphasize clean air. And biochar is a bioproduct that actually, after the forest fire, the remnants in the ground is charcoal. And that specific charcoal, when it's in the ground, helps to eliminate carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Isn't that, there's countries that are going to use this for years because it also helps grow matter, right? It helps to grow your, whatever it is, your products that you're growing. So I challenge you to go home tonight and look up Netflix and go to biochar and get familiar with it because it's in our life now. KNR has been requested to run a pilot project this next couple of years on how efficient it is, what it's going to cost the communities. It's not regulated for you. It's suggested that if you have a chance to use biochar in any of your works that you do that. The only, you'll want to look at that, Bill. We could have a... So this opportunity, then Senator Wagner already talked about that. We didn't get any tax relief for our communities and our constituents. We didn't get a chance to rein in the emergency powers of the governor. We tried all the central and could not get proof of that. So we still are, that cloud is still moving over. We need, we didn't get a chance to really do a very good job of oversight in our government either. And one of my bills will prove that, you know, and then when we move on, I will talk about that. Of course, the safety issues that we've had, it's really about protecting our community, and we didn't get there. We didn't get close to changing and reversing those laws that were put into place last year. I have to say that was Representative Johnson, that was the bill last year, and he's decided not to run after only one term. So the same. So we have the highlights. We, you know, our vote just got passed, emphasized what Senator Wagner said. The transportation was totally out of our reach and we're really sorry that we didn't get much evidence of roll forward $10 million for highway biochar. It's been a year, I mean, it's being rolled forward, but it doesn't give anything else. I don't, I don't even want to talk about transportation. It is, there's just nothing, in my opinion, that is good that's come out of that this year. And hopefully, we'll be able to make some changes in the next couple of years with that. We did spend a lot of money on homelessness and mental health. And sometimes that's not a good thing, right? Because really, what is it doing for our folks? We can't see too much happening in Seattle area. They were beefing up mental health counseling in our local area, but again, it's the workforce that we're in trouble with. And so we've got to really work with our high schoolers and make sure that those career choices that are at least optional for kids that are engaging and going on school, getting their education, we have to make it look inviting. It's a tough, that's a tough career to go into anyway, and you have to have a heart and soul to do it. There are people that have things, you don't know how to get there. So we can talk about that in public now, that we really need to emphasize that career pathway. Yes, we did delay the long-term care, right? We probably for that until July 2023. And they did emphasize, they did eliminate people that are veterans, and there's thousands of them. And so we don't have to do that, but, and then people that work in Washington that live outside the state, they are not admitted to that program. And there was one more that I... Let me see if it's listed there. No, I'm further on. Could you click, please? Supplemental operating budget, we, you know, we reduced way too much money. The one good thing I think that we did was Senate Bill 598, it increased the B and O small business tax credit for the first time in 30 years. So that was good for our small businesses. We move on. There's the transportation. I'm going to move on. And there's our list for our 59th district. And I do want to make sure that you understand that I thought any community that 4.3 billion exists for the hospitals to redevelop their working center into mental health. So that, for that, I was very excited to see the working center bill, but that's not a topic, profit, profit, very, uh, project for the hospital. Here, I think that their Woodard Innovation Center money, 1.7 million, that brings 100 jobs to Derryton when that is completed. And it's that concrete wastewater lift station, I think that's their very first app, as long as I've been in session, they've got that. And then, of course, the Girls and Boys Club E-Cap facility, we got the rest of the money, I think that's all we needed to finish the project. This will be pointed apart, and then we'll, and we call the Masons, a commercial kitchen in your city. Yes. It was a lot of, we sent it forward and they got, so it is scheduled to be a community, a commercial kitchen. So folks that are making their cookies and their cake, because our, once it's set up completely ready to go, should be able to lease that from the Masons to use, because you don't have one. And I can't even tell you where there is one available for these folks that are working and selling that. Okay, moving on. Um, that was our long-term, the employee to work in Washington, that's in Washington. Oh, the other, the other one that is eliminated from the long-term care act is the non-immigrant temporary workers. All right, so we can go on. Um, you know, we talked briefly about public safety. We are desperate, desperate to need a public safety law that are going to change things. And the direction that we're going is still letting people out of prison early, and they were a big part of the big issue right now. And getting you center, if you go get in the center, you see three or four people, you know, there, they transferred some of it into rehab center, didn't they? And frankly, we, one of my committees is children, youth, and families. And so we talk a lot about foster care. We talk a lot about the kids that are in hotels with other groups in other states. Some of these kids should have been in dent... And they are not. And so where are they? They're in hotels or in an office. So tell me, what is better for these children? I don't get this whole concept, but that's the direction we're going. We need some reform, so. And I'm very involved in getting them to foster care with another seatmate that I have, Representative Tompin. He and I are helping talk, yes, they chose, personal, one-to-one, about what happened to Oakley. The five-year-old girl that disappeared. If you are aware, she was from Grace Harbor. She was in foster care for her friend a year and a half. DCYL, DHS, counselor, sent her home to be with mom and dad for a weekend when she was three years old. And she came back and said, don't send me back. So they said that, they did a week later, and then she was with mom and dad for five, for two more years, and now she's disappeared. Mom and dad are in prison because, or in jail, excuse me, because of her siblings were in terrible condition when they went to look for this little girl. So we are wondering and making sure that detectives are on it, Grace Harbor, they are. And, yes, they just will be doing more of the investigation as soon as that part is done. They'll be doing internal investigation, why in the world was this little girl sent back? Now, it's important, it's really important to get our children back into their home like their parents. But they, it absolutely has to be a safe place to be. And when you hear these children dying, you know that it was not a safe place to be. So as you can see, I get a little emotional about that because these children have no say in it. So moving on, I think we're getting down to the end, homelessness and substance abuse and mental health. That brings me to the bill that I did get passed, Hospital 1800. What I found, when I went back to session this year, was that my bill to pay a fee that was going to help get more services to our elderly was not implemented, and it was not located anywhere in the healthcare authority system. That made me very concerned. If my bill hasn't been implemented, how many more are there out there? And that's what I mean when I say government, we need to be watching what we're doing down there and making sure there's follow-through. So Hospital 1800, actually, it provides our full-time employees to connect families, providers, and educators with up-to-date information about behavioral health services for our young children. When you take a mental health person to the ER, because that happens to be the gateway to having mental health services, and the doctors and nurses don't know the law, that's an issue. So we're working. Moving on, Jody. All right. And we talked briefly about the emergency powers that we didn't get the needle moved at all. And frankly, I, has anybody heard any rumors? Is that ever been a hint? We heard nothing. And we don't know what that's going to look like, but we'd certainly like to get back to our democratic state of being able to make some of those decisions. And so we, there were several bills that tried to move it, but it just couldn't get passed. All right, next, please. And there we are, that's why I came up with you. I'm hoping for any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Councilman Disturber? Go ahead. I have a lot of questions, but thank you. To be here and give us this update.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate the work. I'm glad we were listening to the radio, and I didn't realize I got absolutely nothing. I said, I didn't, I didn't realize that you hadn't gotten anything from this legislative session, which is troubling to me. But thank you for trying and keep up the good fight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Disturber. Councilman, go ahead and lean into my conferences.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. I love the news, and thank you for your presentation. The two questions I had was, one of the things you said was that you worked on restoring some lawn. So lawn, what did you do? You got 21. Can you explain which one?
The pursuit, we put on the cross. The, yeah, the one that it is due cost to arrest.
So 5919, actually, I was the one who made the amendment in the Senate. It was a bipartisan amendment to allow pursuit under reasonable suspicion. That made some folks, I'll call it on the far left, very angry. They didn't want to see that power given back to police, and they monkeyed with it in the House, knowing that it would have to come back to the Senate for concurrence, because once there's a change in one body or the other, it must return to the other House. So that was the way that they kept it from being successful despite the fact that it passed with bipartisan support. So it was a win-win and ended up being a loss. So it was a win-win and ended up being a loss. There was some change that allowed, um, police equipment. So in last year's legislation, they did away with anything over, uh, a certain caliber and inadvertently took out a non lethal form beanbags essentially that is a less lethal form than what you would have to go to next. So it was really working against the intent of the law. And we were able to get that changed back to, so that they could use that form of a beanbag gun because it's less lethal. But, but not huge changes. And that's changed because we needed to shift things back. And, and as I said, when I first spoke, I think there was some reform that, that was needed. It just went way too far all at once and took away too many tools from our police. And I think you can see, if you just watch the news or look at the statistics, crime is, uh, double digits up and sometimes triple digits up depending on the, the category. One really disgusting one, human trafficking is up over a hundred percent. So we saw some of those crimes kick off on July first, which was when those laws went into effect. It was almost as if criminals were waiting for the starting gun. Your auto theft. Double overnight. We ought to do better. I think with a more balanced legislature, we will do better.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't go away, maybe Kevin's got an.
No, no, the other thing was really just a comment. I just appreciate your lawyers with investigating and holding D F H S accountable. And in my opinion, they've had unchecked authority and made some serious mistakes. People that I know personally in my own life. And so it's nice to see someone being involved and holding them accountable. So I appreciate that. Keep on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to start by saying thank you both Senator Wagner and Representative Eslick coming tonight. Always look forward to these, um, to these updates. Um, it's always great to hear from you personally. It's, I, I like going, you missed, missed the last couple of years of being able to come down and see you in person, you know, while we're, while we're in session. But, uh, um, I did have a, a, a couple of questions. Well, first, I'll start with a thank you on the mental health side and getting, you know, I know it is a bit of a bummer to the, the, the birthing center here, but the shortage that we have are beds in the mental, on the mental health side. Having dealt with that on a more personal level within my own family, um, you know, just any, any help there would be with you from the mental health side. Or, um, for my person would be on the Alzheimer's side, so on the opposite side of the equation, just so. Um, the thing that we were faced with is there was one available bed, everything on the side of the state, you know? And so you just, when you're having to make your decisions and, um, I just appreciate all the effort I have done to try to show up, um, every, any kind of that. We need beds across the border too, is a, is a crisis. So I appreciate that. Um, and then the last two are, um, well, one is, uh, a question of seventeen ninety nine organic materials that, uh, that, that pass. I guess the one, I, I haven't read, you know, to it for the last time, like some of the studies pass, or there's a city in Seattle, uh, or even some of the, you know, locally, where you, uh, you can pay extra money to have stuff recycled, but there's no one, with all the best intentions, but there's no one holding them accountable and they end up in landfill anyways. Was there anything in the legislation that is going to hold accountable the folks that are going to be charging these, these rates to? Yeah.
I'm not necessarily.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any assurance that that won't happen. I, I would like to go back to the, the behavioral health. Carolyn and I were in a, a unique position to do good for our communities because we, I'm the, uh, ranking member on the Behavioral Health Subcommittee. And I know she has such good connections down here that we've worked really well together. But the other piece of that, those factors about I was talking to before, wouldn't have got that money if it weren't for Senator David Frack, Democrat. I mean, I miss him badly, he's retiring this year. But, uh, without Senator Frack's help and Carolyn's support, we wouldn't get things done like that. And that's why it's so important to maintain balance, and you say it all in already, because I think we have, we kind of lost that. But I, I hope that, uh, we bring it back because things have just gone too far.
Great, thank you. Uh, and then the, the other one was on the long term here. Would be, uh, remiss if I didn't bring up from my, uh, my kids who are watching this, that said, hey dad, I've got an option for when I join the workforce to opt out. And I know that's, you know, not the case, but there is, that, that's the piece that's also, yeah, concerning is that, uh, yeah, we're, we're giving an opt out. One of those of us that are currently in the workforce, but some of us that are right on the top, seventeen, eighteen, they're very much, you know, know what's going on and want to opt out. They're not in the workforce, don't have the opportunity to.
You know, the long term care app was so bad, it very beginning, it gives us none. Uh, and then it slowly, but hopefully we can make this change. I, I wouldn't go back again this next year if I did, or that we can change some changes to all of that.
No, I appreciate that. I know it's something that, I mean, having us, uh, dealing with it personally with my own, uh, you know, mother, there definitely, we do need to do stuff for long term care. I'm not a, you know, uh, but what is being proposed is just, it's a joke.
Really fix that, y'all.
Yeah, and you know, the amount that we spend on a month per day, I mean, that's, that's maybe five months. Um, and, yeah, because a, a full time care needs and then to not have, we go and take it with you after you've put into it three, twenty plus years and then you retire and you have to move because you can't afford to live here anymore. Um, and you can't take that benefit with you is just larceny in my, in my opinion. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you all for our experience this time today. Senator Wagner, which is fifteen, we have to present with him and he's grateful for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Hello there. Um, pretty cool thing to come out, um, and sharing with us. It was a lot about there, man, so. Probably won't get through a ton of it. Um, the longer here thing, um, completely agree with. Uh, we're gonna get with that. I would love to have a refund, you know, but I have to acquire some important costume money. Um, so that's kind of backwards to me. You had a couple of things really that are, you know, what you always case. Um, I don't, I'm always wearing a top on my, my side to use kids as experiments, so it kind of. And I think we really, and I really appreciate you guys' opinion of that. And man, really good topic because we don't have a power, I said, you read about that. These are really big issues and we are, and it's frustrating, it's aggravating, it's not. I love that you guys totally have a lot of, you know, and I really, really do appreciate it. Um, public safety is out of it instead of, you know, you are on your favor to go for any. I think what people want is, and it's, um, the people that were, the helpful that were passed. Took away the ability for leaving, getting. So when those calls came up, you want to, I don't know, say a fourteen year old or a ten year old, whatever it was with their price. They were unable to take possession of them and bring them to an ER. Uh, and if they go there, they're usually like at least three days of staying somewhere in the professional hall, um, to get mentally better. Things are valid with that. And I think that there were definitely some huge ways that you would need to take place in building to do, um, to improve. But you see, the idea of passing laws and not looking at it, what is it actually happening in the streets is extremely rough. When I have to sit down with the twelve year old, like, what would you like to do when that are here as adults? Take care of those kids, so. Um, you can go on, um, Mary, you'll be here and, uh, thanks for talking with us tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Fisher. Uh, any other questions or comments from councilmembers, including Councilmember Davis? All right. All right, thank you. And, um, Senator, Representative, I have, uh, a, uh, just a thank you, uh, from our city this evening. Um, I have to offer you a, a simple certificate of appreciation presented to you, Representative Eslick and Representative Wagner. Um, what it says is with sincere appreciation for your service to and toward the city and road during the tenure as representative or senator for the thirty ninth legislative district and then your dates of service for your representative office. So thank you, I'll bring this over to you. And then also we have, um, a picture that we would invite you to hang wherever you like. This is one of our sculptures from downtown in Sweeps, which is, you're aware, is very unique here in the borough. And so I'm gonna have a look at it with you. And then we have a summer certificate, uh, and a picture and photo for, um, Representative, uh. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Robert, uh, Southern, uh, different nation. So I'm gonna go ahead and bring my sword and, uh, Councilmember wanted to come down and, uh, we can take a brief reset.
Yeah.
The training partners, here we go. Um, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the item on the agenda now. That item would be legislative update for, uh, from this night, from Deborah Knight. All right, Deborah.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I invited Trevor Justin, our lobbyist with Strategies three sixty and A J Dot Tower, also with Strategies three sixty to come, following the presentations this evening from Senator Wagner and Representative Eslick, just to that cleanup, as I said. So I did include in the agenda packet this evening some information just about the city's legislative priorities. Uh, those items are listed again in the packet, talking about some of the highlights for us. Senator Eslick did mention the ten million dollar in funding that got forwarded, uh, for five two two widening and Paradise Lake Road Interchange. Uh, also expanding the transportation benefit district to allow for additional ten year periods. We're going to be going out for a vote, uh, to renew our own transportation benefit district here in the next couple of years. And so that was important to us. And then clarifying the ambiguities and intent around Senate Bill fifty fifty one and House Bill thirteen ten. Uh, both Senator Wagner and Representative Eslick mentioned those this evening as well. And then maintaining the city's land use authority. And there's a list of the bills that the Association of Washington Cities put together around housing and land use. And then, uh, finally maintaining the city's authority to lien properties for non payment of utilities. And, uh, we did achieve that as well. So I do have Trevor Justin in here this evening and A J Dot Tower. And I will let them provide additional commentary, uh, about this legislative session and potentially what we, uh, have to look forward to in the next session in twenty twenty three. So I don't, it, it looks like Trevor is prepared to speak, so Trevor, go ahead and step to the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's good to see you. Um, sorry, I couldn't be there in person, had some scheduling conflicts, but glad to be in front of you virtually. Um, want to start by saying, I know, I think they walked out of the room, but thank you to Senator Wagner and Representative Eslick, um, who are great champions for the city. Um, I think Senator Wagner, I think Senator Wagner mentioned that he, they got redistricted out. So we are, we will be in a different legislative district going forward. We're gonna, we're gonna miss them dearly, but it'll be nice to still lean on them and work with them going forward, um, just in a different capacity. So wanted to note that upfront. Um, I will highlight a few of the city's priorities from legislative agenda, as Deborah mentioned. Um, one of the key wins for the city this legislative session was ten million in funding for the state Route five two two widening project. The Paradise Lake Interchange and Widening. Um, obviously the legislative ask was much bigger than ten million dollars. Uh, I think it was on the order of more about a hundred million. Um, so more work to do on that going forward, but great to see any funding included nonetheless. Um, Representative Eslick and Senator Wagner, I mentioned it, that funding, the part of that project is actually in the first legislative district. So it's actually just outside the thirty ninth, um, and just outside the city, of course, but obviously a vital, a vital corridor for the city of Monroe. And that's a ask that we've been working on, will continue to work on for years going forward. So it was nice to see, although a small number, ten million important funding nonetheless. Um, that will be joined with connecting Washington funds from twenty fifteen that will kind of T up engineering and design for that corridor. Um, to set us up for construction down the road. So we'll continue to work on that, but the ten million was, was good to see nonetheless. Another priority, which is not as good of news, was the parks bill, which we've been working on for a number of years. I know you all have heard me talk about this bill. This was House Bill ten twenty five, who was, the bill was sponsored by Representative Eslick in the past. The last couple of years, it was sponsored by Representative Emily Wicks. And again, this was a, a bill that was a priority for, I think it's been what, four years now, Deborah? I think we've worked on it. Uh, unfortunately, that bill did not make it. Um, we, we made it through the legislative, the House Finance Committee, and we got to the Rules Committee, but did not get to the floor for a vote in the House and did not have action on the Senate side. Uh, want to thank Mike Farrell, um, in the city for testifying on that bill. I think he testified on it about five or six times over the last few years. So, um, we're gonna go back to the drawing board and see if that's a bill that we want to pursue going forward. But, um, unfortunately, that bill was not successful this year as well. Um, I will note covert and fish barrier removal, that was money included in the transportation package as well. There's about two and a half billion dollars to kind of clean up some of those culverts. Um, you, you all might remember that the state is under court order to take care of those culverts. So, um, nice to see that the package included, uh, I believe that was full funding for the covert removal. And then I did want to touch on the police issues. Obviously, that, those have been highly discussed already. Um, a lot of work done in twenty twenty one legislative session, that issue. There was, I think, what most would say are improvements in the twenty twenty two session on those issues. There was House Bill twenty thirty seven, which kind of clarified what a lot of folks call Terry stops. Um, when you're investigating a suspect, you know, before this bill passed, um, it was my understanding that people that were questioned would just walk away and police weren't allowed to kind of go after them or pursue them in any form or fashion. So they could literally just walk away from the crime scene. House Bill twenty thirty seven, sponsored by Representative Goodman, would clarify that. So police could detain these suspected, um, criminals or, or those who have broken the law. So they could at least detain them at the, at the scene. So that was an improvement that was a bipartisan bill that passed the legislature this last year. So that was good. And then House Bill seventeen thirty five also was a bill that I think folks would say swung, swung the pendulum back a little bit and improved the standard for use of force on police. Um, laws from twenty twenty one that were passed, I think a lot of police departments had a lot of ambiguity around, you know, how they could proceed going forward. There was a lot of gray area in some of that legislation that passed in twenty one. So this seventeen thirty five from this last twenty twenty two legislative session clarified that police can't use some use of force in certain situations. Um, and that bill was also voted on bipartisan, passed the legislature. I think that one only had a few no votes between the House and the Senate combined. So a couple of improvements, um, as you heard from Representative Eslick and Senator Wagner, not the full changes that, that their caucuses would have liked to see, but I think most would say improvements nonetheless. Um, so that was, that was nice to see an improvement, um, better than nothing. So that was, that was nice to see. I will pause there. Uh, Deborah, anything to cover? I'm happy to see any questions.
I don't have anything.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from councilmembers or comments? All right, it sounded, it looks like we're fully updated. Uh, Trevor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, you're getting thank yous, you may not hear them down the line, but they're, they're thanking you. Okay, uh, thank you very much for all the work and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be public comments. Uh, there's a time to decide for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter. Uh, three minutes is, uh, afforded to each speaker. If you'd like to speak this evening, uh, please approach the podium or please raise your hand if you are on Zoom. Uh, you can do that by hitting star nine if you're on the phone or just selecting the little hand up icon in the middle of your screen. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to your councilmember reports and we'll start off with Councilmember Starborough, any report this evening?
Well, having you attend the Arbor Day presentation, planning the tree Friday. I think my dog was just about as big a hit as flat the tree. That was kind of fun for the third day. Nice to see the city participate tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Starborough. Councilmember Fisher. Thank you, Councilmember Hinter.
Yeah, just loved being on Sunday and seeing the like guy on the field team with the use with the Alabrock run and police persons fire. I'm sure that people have done about that. It was great to see all the use going on and still having lots of room for other things to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Hinter. Councilmember Kenny.
I also attended the Arbor Day celebration on Friday, and that was really a great time. I think that was record attendance. We had a great crowd, really wonderful. And also there is a Facebook page, I'm sure some of you are familiar with, called You Had Me at Monroe. And there's a pretty robust conversation going on online. Someone named Josh put out a question, if you could change one thing about Monroe, what would it be? And it's just elicited a ton of comments. So I hopped on there and said, you know, a lot of it was, you need to take this to city council. So I got on and said, I am a city council member and I'm reading each one and I'm listening. So I'm continuing to sort of monitor what people are saying and we'll bring some of that information back to council at some point.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Folter, go ahead.
Same thing that we've been talking about the Arbor Day thing was very good this year. It was also nice to have a little more insight into the memorial. Thank you, Mayor Thomas, for speaking to our superintendent and school board president about that and giving them the history. That was very good. Also having a lot of fun with the Hooton and Horn and generally, you know, giving people that time that's basically on Sunday. One of my favorite things is to yell, you know, why we get that kind of thing. So anyway, it was a really good time and it's a good meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Folter. Councilmember Davis.
Excuse me, nothing really to record out here on the frontier. But I should be back home in, in my seat next week, so I'll see you all then. That's about it from here.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, actually, I was, I was out of town this weekend. I was bummed to miss like the festivities, Arbor Day. And then I'm usually right there front and center for the 5K. Yeah, the DJ was not there this year. It was a rare miss for me. Before I was in San Diego with my wife, some of you may have saw, I haven't spoken to her in over two months. Taking a hiatus from social media, but we were celebrating her being inducted into their all day for the company that she works for. So it was a really great weekend, got to celebrate, pretty important woman in my life. And a lot of people, she had to sit there and take compliments for like four days, which was really hard for her to do. Yeah, Miss Knight knows that. She knows my life. And so it was, it really was a great weekend, but I did miss, but it was fun to be able to see all that stuff through social media and kind of keep tabs on what was going on. And I'm just enjoying always this time of year, we've got some really old roddendrins in this town. A couple of them are in my backyard, 60 plus years old or whatever. It's all this time here. It's absolutely gorgeous.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamble. Okay, we're going to go on to Mayor and administrative reports and we'll start off with Deborah. All right, go ahead, Deborah.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward for the extended agenda for next week. We do have a city council legislative affairs committee meeting. And our clerk, Jody Wyckoff, will be the star of that show. She's going to be going through the rules of procedure, the council rules of procedure. So that's a continuing discussion with the legislative committee. And then Title II amendments, that's the administrative and personnel section of our municipal code. And Title IV, which is our boards and commissions section. So she will be bringing forward some amendments for the legislative committee to consider. Looking then on to the regular business meeting, we will have an ordinance, second reading, establishing Juneteenth as a paid city holiday, authorizing the mayor to sign a local agency consultant agreement supplemental, the tool design. That's for the US2 non-mobility shared path in front of the fairgrounds. And then final design and, oh, that's the same one, federal design and construction services. And under new business, we have an ordinance amending municipal code Title 12. We'll be talking about that this evening. And then ordinance doing the interim definitions for the unified development regulations. Council had passed those and they've expired, so we need to reestablish them. We'll be adding some additional definitions that the state legislature has passed. So you'll be seeing that at the next meeting and then coming back to you within 60 days for some final action. And then the Connor annexation meeting, which the council had established back on April 26 for the May 10 meeting. So that'll be coming back for, for the discussion by the city council. Looking forward then to the study session on May 17. We do have a finance committee meeting, again, a full agenda there, an FMLA policy update with Ben Werfen, 2021 annual report review with our finance director Becky Hassard, and then the 2022 budget amendment. So the finance committee will be reviewing those items, but no study session that evening. We will be having a motion under city administrator reports to cancel that meeting.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Deborah? Go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry, you were reaching for the, okay, very good. All right. No questions. And it's the administrative report.
Thank you. I have to look at it on the big screen because I can't see it on the small.
If the council hasn't been made aware, the governor has rescinded proclamation 2028, which will be effective June 1st. That means that in-person meetings have been reestablished. We will need to amend Title IV of our boards and commissions section to allow for those hybrid meetings to take place. And then we'll be transitioning our board of commission meetings to hybrid meeting format by June 1st. So we're going to be starting by using the OWLS. That's that technology that has us down on the floor with the tables to begin with. But as we find to these council meetings, we're getting closer and closer, I think, with each meeting. We'll be able then to move the planning commission and the parks board up to the dais. The economic development advisory board meets in the mornings at eight. So we're going to continue to use the OWLS for our meetings. And then same thing with the community human service advisory board, because they have a conflict with the parks board. They have the same Thursday meeting. So we will be having those community human service advisory board meetings back in the Monroe coordination center, as they were previously before COVID. So that's the transition plan for boards and commission meetings. There was an article in the Everett Herald over the weekend, and we talked about this at our last council meeting, just the challenges that Republic and other garbage collection service companies are having with transporting their garbage out of the county. We received an email today from Snohomish County regarding that challenge. And we forwarded that on to the city council for you to take a look at. We are beginning to plan for contingency, of course, in the case when the public services may not be able to pick up municipal waste from our residents. And we're just beginning to plan for what that might look like in the case when we may have to collect garbage in some sort of different fashion if it extends for a period of time. Just starting to plan around that. Hopefully, we won't have to take any action. Gateway signs, for those of you that drive, pass around about or come in from the south side of town ever, you can see that the base of our future gateway signs are in place now, and the crews will be back on the 23rd of May to finish up the installation. And then those signs will be placed and we'll look forward to getting community feedback on them once they're installed. Our application update, I do have one slide. Do you want to go on to the next slide? This kind of breaks out the ARF applications that we've received. I don't know how easy that is to see in those colors. I'll remember that. But you can see, I talked about at the last meeting again, that the number of applications that we received across the board is fairly balanced between recovery, reconnecting, and resiliency. I just also wanted to give council an idea about the size of the applications that we receive. So you can see the minimums are all about the same, kind of running in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. Same thing with the maximums, running, you know, anywhere from 150 to 232,000. That was our highest application that we received was 232,000. That came in from Pursuit Fitness, just to let you know. I'm sure people are wondering like, who would ask for 232,000? That was it, Pursuit Fitness. And then you can see the averages are running again about the same. Total applications, the lowest number of applications that we received dollar wise was the Reconnecting Community, which was the same as in round one. We had the lowest value, dollar value wise of applications around Reconnecting Community, which makes sense, right? Because the other two have a lot more to do with adding personnel, which are very expensive, or doing capital investments, which also have kind of higher price tags than running events, which is most of what the Reconnect Community is out. So there you go. That's kind of a data-driven look at our ARF applications for those of you that like data, like me. So I got a lot of joy. I would see these numbers. All right. And then back to the slide, just a motion to cancel the May 17 study session.
Thank you very much. So do you understand we need a motion to cancel the May 17 study session? And the answer is yeah. Councilmember Hinter, go ahead.
I voted to cancel the May 17 study.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hinter, a second from Councilmember Folter to cancel the May 17 study session. Any discussion on the motion? There being none? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passed at 7:00. Thank you, everybody. All right. Anything else, Deborah?
Yes, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the mayor's report. And I have a couple of other proclamations, just to draw your attention to in the packets. And we pull that up. May is a, a big month or April and May are big months for proclamations. And let me. So we've already done Mother's Day, having issues for, there we go. We've already done Mother's Day. So Happy Mother's Day to all the moms listening in. And then we also have municipal clerks, professional municipal clerks week, that's this week. And we have a couple of people that do that job here in Monroe. They include Jody, right over there. Thank you, Jody. They include Patricia Pendry and Sherri Simonson. And also Leanne Barr and Anna Mater. And one of the things that, so I really value the work that they do, that you do. They maintain a very objective presence in the room and it's their job to understand the rules of procedure, parliamentary procedures, and to help me and help us maintain a very low-run meeting. In addition to all of that, minutes and the agendas and making certain everything is correct, we've been going through a lot lately with going into fully remote and the hybrid. And your profession these days is learning very quickly like everybody else, but then having to sustain some of those things where there are at least perceived improvements, if not improvements, but it takes a lot to go through all that technology and it's changing. So to you and everybody else that's doing that work here at the city, thank you. And then and then we also recognizing National Correction Officers Week and Employees Week. That also is the same week this week. We have the corrections facility here in Monroe. And so we'll make certain that they get a copy of that. And I think that's it for this week. Couple items then from me. We did have a really large turnout for Arbor Day this year. Staff did a really great job organizing that. In addition to having council member, a couple of council members that are like we normally do and Dory there. Dory, Dory McCourty there. And having the, the teacher there along with the teacher's students. We had a pretty significant turnout from other people from the municipal district. So the acting superintendent was there, Kim, and also the board president, Jennifer Bumpus was there. She did a really good job of, of getting all of the students to stand like a tree. And that was a lot of fun. They, she did a very nice job of presenting the importance of Arbor Day and engaging with the students. Tammy, Councilmember Kenny also did a really great job of giving a presentation associated with the Garden Club, I believe, and or the Historical Society. And we had a couple of other people speak as well from the Garden Club. And, you know, it was great seeing Councilmember Starborough and Councilmember Folter, Councilmember Kenny there. And Councilmember Starborough, because I miss someone, yeah, a couple of planning commissioners and a couple of other people, I think was there, I think everyone's supporter member there. But yeah, it was, it was a really great turnout. And then after that, I went ahead and walked over, just like Councilmember Folter mentioned, to the memorial. Because one of the things that we'd like to do, if this whole district would like to do is have a little bit more of a robust support for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And the school district representatives that were there, as well as the planning commissioner that was there, was not aware of the history around the memorial that was out there. So we had a nice discussion for about 15 minutes about, you know, about the memorial there and expressed that that I place a wreath out there on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and it's been pretty informal. And if they'd like to join us this year, they should feel welcome to do that. I do also want to mention that Councilmember, County Councilmember Sam Low was there. And he also walked over to, to listen on the memorial discussion. So one of the things that's important to me is to make certain that those sorts of traditions that we have are not just supported by only one person at the city or only the city, but that there, there are things that community values that build, you know, things will broaden out and more people will be involved. And I, the Arbor Day this year, with all the people there and the school board being more active, then it just, it warmed my heart to see that happen. So that tells me that there's value there and people appreciate it. So with all that said, I'm going to thank in advance, Councilmember Hinter, who's going to be placing the wreath out at the memorial on Memorial Day. And Councilmember Hinter, I will follow up with the VFW to just try to find out if they're interested in stopping by when that wreath is placed there. And then I'll coordinate with you a little bit on what sort of time you'd like to have that done. And you can share that with the council members and to the extent that they're available, able to come and do that, that this year, that would be great. Again, I'll be gone from the 20th of May and returning in town on the 11th of June. And I appreciate the work that different folks are doing to, to keep things going, keep lights on going on. Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Knight, yes.
I forgot to ask if there was another council member who would be interested in sitting in on one of the review committees. At the last meeting, we had Councilmember Hinter and Councilmember Gamble, who expressed interest in, in being a part of that process. And we have one committee left. Is there anybody else that's interested in participating in those application review and discussions?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be discussion items. So we have discussion item number 8.1, proposed code revision of running municipal code MMC Title 12. I'm looking for minutes. And I'm going to bring Jacob Roberts, our planning director forward. And good evening, Jacob. You're on the panel.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas. Hello, everybody. Let me just get my screen squared away here and I'll be right with you. Okay. So let's see, Jody, you know, I can't see the slideshow at this current moment. Hang on. Are you, can we start with slide one, please? There it is. Thank you. And maybe let's just skip to slide two, Title 12 Monroe Municipal Code. There we go. So Title 12 of the code regulates the use of the right-of-way permitted activities. So generally, that's going to be construction and maintenance of infrastructure within that space. It also serves to regulate or kind of define how the city address system works. It allows us to have a transportation benefit district and a separate board. And then it establishes the requirements for complete streets and how they're to be implemented in the city of Monroe. Next slide, please. So variances in Title 12, Chapter 1236180. So variances in Title Twelve, Chapter Twelve Thirty Six One Eighty. It was established way back in nineteen ninety three and provides the city council the authority to grant variances from any and all provisions of the chapter and any standards adopted hereunder. So some of the council, actually, most of the council will likely remember the Zibley Fiber permit process that came through the council as a quadgy, this is really hard to say for me, quasi judicial matter. It was presided over by the city council and it is actually the only available record that I could find through my research and also discussion with former director Faubert regarding the use of that process in the past. Jody, next slide, please. So variances in other titles of the municipal code. Typically, we use a hearing examiner in Monroe to preside over those quasi judicial requests. That process was established by ordinance back in two thousand and eight and it's detailed in Title Two Two Point Three Four Point Zero Two Zero. Next slide. So here's a list of the code titles. There are, what, seven of them? And the general description of those titles, where the hearing examiner process is used. It runs from general provisions, revenue and finance, business regulation, public services on down through the bottom there, our unified development regulations. Next slide, please. The comparison of the two codes, so a pretty minor code change fairly straight ahead. Current code says the council has authority to grant variances. The proposed code would remand that authority to the hearing examiner. In both cases, the applicant shall bear the burden of demonstrating that the criteria for variance are met. So in the code, there are four criteria, which we can go through if the council has questions about those. And then the third piece that Attorney Low added, which I do very much appreciate, the current code says any party with or without standing may be considered aggrieved by the decision of the council and then appeal that decision to a superior court. The proposed code narrows that a little bit and makes, makes it so that the party must have a legal standing to be considered aggrieved. So not anyone could file the suit, but someone has to actually have some standing. And then it would go from the hearing examiner's decision up to a superior court. Next slide, please. So next steps, incorporate the feedback from the council if there is any, and we would return to council for consideration. First reading at a business meeting in May. Mayor Thomas, that concludes my presentation. I turn it back to you.
All right, thank you very much, Jacob. Councilmember Starborough, go ahead.
Can we go back one slide? So this city council will have the authority to grant, and that's gonna change to only the hearing examiner shall have the authority to grant.
That's correct. That's the proposed code. I'm certainly able to take notes if there's feedback from the council that you would like to see it done differently. Again, creating the consistency, this code was adopted in nineteen ninety three. We didn't have a hearing examiner process in Monroe until two thousand and eight. And we had not utilized this code based on the records that I could find since it was originally enacted.
So taking the authority away from the city council is okay?
That's a decision of the council, certainly, sir.
Councilmember Starborough, what, just, just so that you're aware, there were a number of decisions used to be for the council to make. One of the challenges that the planning and public works profession has had is that when you're issuing permits and things like that, that these sorts of quasi judicial matters, there, there is legal risk associated with the decisions made by, by the legislative body. And so there's been a a move away that most everything is now done by a hearing examiner who collects the evidence like the judge does. And then weighs the evidence and the testimony against what the code requires. And also considers case law as maybe necessary and issues a decision. So that's, that's what's going on with this. And as Jacob pointed out, this is probably a section of code that just didn't get updated when like preliminary flats, short flats, final flats, and things like that were moved to a hearing examiner. And before you respond, Jacob, would you concur with how I summarized that so that I make certain that I was accurate in relating that?
I would not only concur with what you said, I would express my appreciation for the way you stated it. That's very
Thank you. Councilmember Starborough, you still have the floor.
Yeah, well, you're explaining the number three there, the party standing. Something I'm not understood. Can you tell me that in current there?
I can tell you in a very, I'm gonna say distilled down. I'm not the attorney. I did speak with Attorney Low about this matter. I would summarize standing and, and Deborah or Mayor Thomas, you can kind of correct me if I'm wrong here, but I would summarize standing as some level of harm. So in other words, in the matter of the Zibley Fiber case, to relate it back to when we actually did go through that process. Anyone could have appealed the decision that was given by the council to Zibley Fiber. In the case that way it is written now, only Zibley Fiber or some subsidiary of Zibley Fiber would be able to appeal that case because the decision affected them.
So you're saying it changes to the fact that anybody could appeal your decision?
No, in fact, it would go, it would go the other way. It would become not appealable by anyone. It would only become appealable by the party that was involved.
So the party that involved had to be basically in a lawsuit over the particular situation to be in standing.
I believe I understand what you're saying is correct.
Again, this is probably something that it would be best to have Zach Low weigh in on, but I would define standing as being somebody who is impacted by the decision.
Yeah, go for it. Yeah, you've got more, so. Go ahead.
You know, my question stems from a previous lawsuit. And the in-standing thing came to the point where the only people who could speak were the people that were in the lawsuit. And what, what's kind of ranked me there, but I, I don't know that I agree that the only people that ought to be able to appeal are the people that unless the people that are affected could be then defined not necessarily as being the lawsuit bringer. I'm not sure I understand that well. Maybe your conversation will happen.
That's what I was going to suggest. Councilmember Starborough is just that we clarify what that means, since we're bringing it back at a business meeting. Our attorney Zach Low will leave here and if it's not clear in the agenda materials that we provide, then you could certainly get some clarification during that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
So would this apply too for code variances or zoning variances? That we have in the code have been brought forth, the city council for for us to consider for variance moving direction? Back to the hearing examiner?
So, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this, this specific code amendment is only for Title Twelve. It doesn't have anything to do with zoning. It has to do specifically with the usage of the right-of-way.
That's right.
Yes.
Anything further, Councilmember Campbell?
A lot of this time.
Thank you. All right, anything further, Jacob?
No.
Okay, any other questions for Jacob?
No, thank you, Jacob.
Right. Do we have anything else this evening?
I can say with confidence, we do not.
Okay. There being confidence, we have no there being, there is confidence, we have no further business this evening unless there's objection. We are adjourned. Is there objection? Say none. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you, everybody.